So, good morning and welcome to the Region Four Virtual Town Halls. I want to thank everybody for getting on. We're truly excited. This is obviously not the way that we wanted to host our virtual, our town halls, but we wanted to meet with our colleagues across the state nonetheless. COVID-19, the pandemic, has derailed a lot of the initiatives that we had planned for 2020. But we felt as an executive board and as our professional staff that having these dialogues and meeting with everybody as best we can is ultimately important. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Mike Lanati, our executive director and our professional staff for the amazing job that they did communicating and helping keep lines of communication open with the governor's office throughout the pandemic and continuing to this day. Mike has done a spectacular job. His team there in Albany has made sure that our needs and our concerns were brought to the governor's office quickly and that dialogue maintains to this day. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mike Lanati.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you very much for those kind remarks. I know I can speak for all of the folks here in Albany who were very proud to be able to help in any way we could during the pandemic. And please know that we continue to remain vigilant. We're checking things on a daily basis and continue to advocate for all of you and will do everything that we need to do as the circumstances potentially change as we head into the fall and the winter. So, just to echo Bill's comments, thank you all very much for joining us this morning. What you'll see, most of us are on mute now, which is great. That just helps avoid some background noise. So, if you wouldn't mind staying on mute until you're ready to make a comment or ask a question, then that will just help us, again, with some of the background noise that sometimes we might experience. Just so everybody knows, these town halls are being recorded. So, if you have colleagues from the region who are unable to join us today, they will have a chance to go onto our website and listen to and see the recording of the town hall. We are doing that across the state. So, once all the town halls are concluded at the end of this week, we will be uploading all of those and letting everyone know that they can go and take a look, not just at your own region, but any of the regions that you'd like to look at and see the conversations that took place there. One last kind of housekeeping thing is that we are scheduled for an hour, but we don't have a time limit. So, if there are questions and comments that are still coming in when we hit the 11 o'clock hour, we can continue on. And on the opposite side, if we are done and it's before 11, we'll sign off whenever we're done. So, again, just wanted to make sure you know we have no time constraints. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through a short PowerPoint presentation for you that will help kind of frame the conversation for today. So, I'm going to just share my screen with you and walk you through that. And then we'll open it up for discussion. All right. So, as I mentioned, we are recording this and we are working our way across the state, starting last week when we began. Before we jump into the PowerPoint, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the sponsors whose support has helped us underwrite all the town halls. So, quick thank you and shout out to all of them. So, what we're going to go through this morning, just a quick overview. We have two topics on the agenda that we want to hear from you about. Those are, one, that we're calling paraprofessionals and the other is alcohol in funeral homes. The way we're going to do it is I will go through this PowerPoint and then we will open it up to discussion because our goal through this town hall and all the town halls across the state is to obtain member feedback. And as I mentioned, each region will have its own town hall. And what we're going to do at the end is take all of the feedback, consolidate that and present it to the association board at their December meeting. It's also very important for everyone to understand we have no desired outcome, no defined next steps or plans on either of these two topics. We have taken no official position on the issues we are about to discuss today and we haven't drafted legislation. We haven't researched the specifics for legislation on either of these. And the reason I bring that up is because these types of, these topics would require a change in law if there was anything that we decided that we wanted to move forward and do. So, the paraprofessional conversation is one that has been going on for a little bit of time now, but I would like to give you really the real full chronology of this issue and how it fits into where we are today and how we got to this point of having these town halls, including that topic. So, you can see there that this has really been, in some way, shape or form, part of a discussion that started in 2015 with our Funeral Service Education Task Force. We then had a second task force and a member survey that's kind of led to the data points that we've collected to get to the point where we're having this town hall. So, those discussions that started in 2015 were not specifically about paraprofessionals, but back then it was part of the larger funeral service workforce issues, which have been on the radar screen since that time. So, that, as I mentioned, the first group that was put together was called the Funeral Service Education Task Force. And you can see from the screen there that their goal was strengthening and elevating funeral service now and for the future. They had four areas of focus. They looked at residency, education and curriculum in the mortuary science programs, continuing education and master certification. After their work was done, they presented several recommendations to the association board. For the area of residency, their recommendation was to add a discernment period and increase the accountability and structure around residency. Just so everyone knows, that is now at a point where we have drafted legislation to address that issue after several years of speaking with stakeholders, including the mortuary science program directors themselves. So, we are at a point where we do have legislation drafted that we could potentially introduce into the state legislature. Education and curriculum, their recommendation there was to have a new proposed curriculum for the mortuary science programs themselves. And with regard to continuing education and master certification, their recommendation was to have a new mandatory credentialing program and higher quality continuing education program review and approval regimen. So, all of those are still being looked at. And then back in 2018, the association president at the time formed what was called the Funeral Service 2020 Task Force. And the goal of that task force was to explore and implement new programs to ensure a bright future for funeral service in New York State. In some ways, it was an extension or expansion or even possibly a continuation of the work of the education task force. And you can see the reason why we say that is look at the areas of focus. Some of them overlap with what the Funeral Service Education Task Force was working on. The 2020 Task Force looked at the areas of recruitment, residency, professional development mentors and paraprofessionals. What I like to say is that this task force took more of a holistic approach to exploring the workforce issues that were presented and that's really presented in that circle graph. So, you can see that in overall, that task force was really focused on the quality and quantity of the funeral service workforce. And they knew that that began with, really, before people were in the programs, the high school students who might have an interest in becoming a funeral director. So, that was dubbed the pre-students. And as you can see, you could go all the way around that circle, all the way to the point where someone is a retired funeral director. The pre-student piece is being worked on. Many of you probably recall our career in funeral service endeavor and we have a website and videos and information. We have been working with the guidance counselors at the high schools to provide them with information for anyone who might be interested. And then we have the different areas going around the circle that we are working on. This, the task force itself concluded its work in June of 2019 and their recommendation was to utilize a series of work groups, task forces and our bridge commission to address the different focus areas that they had looked at. With regard to paraprofessionals specifically, their recommendation was to create another task force to continue the work that they had started. And before the board, they board accepted the recommendations, but before they went ahead and started to form any additional work groups or task forces, they desired additional member input first. The original plan to do so was to go through and have these conversations with you at the regional meetings this past spring. But as we all know, COVID has disrupted those plans and caused us to cancel the regional meetings and that was replaced by these town halls. So, again, this is our first chance to really have a conversation with you and get some input from you on these two issues that we're going to talk about. Before the paraprofessional, as the paraprofessional work group was coming up with their recommendation, they took the 2020 Task Force and they divided themselves up into several work groups, one for each of the focus areas. And each of those tasks or work groups took a deeper dive into the topics that they were working on. So, the one that took a deeper dive into the topic of paraprofessionals, they did it through a specific exercise and that's what I'm going to show with you now. So, that group was presented with an assumption scenario and asked to answer or really address a specific question or questions. And that scenario is on the screen for you there. So, we asked a hypothetical question where we said, assume that the state association had received notice from the Department of Health that due to the extremely low numbers of licensed funeral directors in New York State, the Department of Health had declared it's a public health issue. Further, assume that the department is proposing a new license or certification to be developed to address the workforce needs in funeral service due to the lack of licensed funeral directors and a determination that addressing this issue through additional newly licensed funeral directors is not feasible at this point. So, the specific question to the group was, what would the ideal job description and responsibilities be to address this new certified or licensed position? So, those were the, that was a specific question that they were posed. So, before they were able to create a job description, the first step that they looked at in answering the question was exploring the why and coming up with a list of, I'll call it, the what should be addressed. Or maybe said a little differently, based on the assumption scenario, why is there a lack of funeral directors? And what needs to be accounted for when creating these new positions? And the group's answers to that, those questions are here on the list that you see. So, you can see that their rationale for these and developing a new position description and responsibilities was to address things like to spark a career interest in funeral service, to create a pool of qualified workers, to protect families by ensuring they're only working with vetted and certified professionals, to counter the shortage of people in the mortuary science programs. I'm sure many of you are already aware, but, and this has been brought up on some of the other town halls, there are a very small number of people graduating from each of the programs, especially when you consider years past. I believe someone had said that Hudson Valley last year had 44 or 45 students enrolled and they graduated less than 10 people at the end of last year, I believe it was. They also wanted to make sure that they were responsive to families' needs to better serve them, to also respond to the fact that funerals are now more involved and requiring more event planning and similar services, to create an option for smaller funeral homes who just might not have the ability to hire a full-time licensed funeral director because it's cost prohibitive. To also help relieve some front and back office operations that are now borne by the owner or the manager, to supplement the availability of funeral service professionals, enhance the role of the licensed funeral director because in this, and you'll see the way it was structured, it's a responsibility of the licensed funeral director, any new position, to create more value in that role because you have additional duties. And finally, to prevent burnout of licensed funeral directors, more of that work-life balance being taken into consideration. So, once the group had worked through the exercise of coming up with the needs list, it started to work on looking at different positions that could address filling these needs. So, that was really the how. How are we going to look at doing this? And what they decided to do was explore two potential positions, the Certified Funeral Assistant and the Certified Funeral Arranger. So, these are the paraprofessional positions that we were referring to. One very important point to bring up on this slide and the word to focus on on this slide is the word explored. Again, just to reinforce this, the task force recommendation was to form another task force to continue the work that they were, they had started on this topic. They did not recommend any specific position be created. So, these positions were explored, but the recommendation of the task force was not to go ahead and form any position or positions. However, they spent a year and put a lot of time, thought and discussion towards this. So, we want to share it with you to give us a place from which to further our discussion today and to provide a reference for your feedback. So, what I'd like to do now is walk you through the duties of each of these two positions that they proposed as well as some of the education and training requirements that they would include. The Certified Funeral Assistant proposed duties are listed here. So, again, it's important to keep in mind it's a paraprofessional position that was, was the goal of creating this. So, similar to the dentist, dentist industry or dental services where you have a hygienist, the legal profession where you have a paralegal and someone else even brought up on one of our other calls that is also similar to the nursing field where you have a nurse practitioner and an LPN and, and an RN. So, you have different levels of nursing as well. So, that position and the way it's structured by the work group was that any Certified Funeral Assistant would have to work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director. They would only be allowed to be employed by one funeral home at a time. They would be allowed to sign out and transfer the deceased from a place of death. They could assist with preparation, dressing and casketing. However, they would not be allowed to transport the deceased into the place of final disposition over the concerns that you can see there. They would not be allowed to direct or supervise services. They would not be allowed to sign or amend death certificates and bomb or conduct arrangements. The arrangement piece would be something that we'll talk about with the Certified Funeral Arranger in just a minute. As far as requirements, both the initial education and the ongoing training, they sketched out a framework that could possibly include eight to 12 hours of a pre-certification training program, followed by successfully passing a state exam. The certification would be something issued by the State Department of Health. You, just like you guys, they would have to recertify every two years and have continuing education per biennium. The recommendation would be for, for this position, which would also require OSHA and ethics as part of any continuing education requirements. When we look at the funeral arranger position, similar to the assistant, you would only work under the direct supervision of a licensed funeral director, only be employed by one funeral home at a time. These positions would be allowed to make arrangements, collect vital information, coordinate and schedule final disposition, arrange for the care, preparation and transportation of the deceased. They could also sell and discuss merchandise and services. This position, though, would not be allowed to sign contracts. That would still be solely at the responsibility and duty of the licensed funeral director. They would not be allowed to sign or amend death certificates and they would not be allowed to embalm. This position, the recommendation was a less, more intense or longer certification. 20 hours of pre-certification was recommended as a possible starting point for conversation, including 25 hands-on arrangements under the supervision of a licensed funeral director. You'd have to have an overview of the embalming process. Again, you'd be required to pass that state-recognized exam. It would be sort of a position certified by the state, recertified every two years. In terms of the topics and the number of CE's required, that would be something to still be discussed. However, they felt very strongly that ethics should be one of the required topics. So, that's the outline or the framework of the two positions that they worked on. Again, because they put so much time and energy and discussion into it, we wanted to give it, share with you so that we have that as a basis for our conversation. One other thing that we want to share with you is the fact that right before they provided their recommendation to the board in June of 2019, and this was during their final stages of putting their work together, the task force sought some initial member feedback. So, we went ahead and did a member survey in 2019. So, I want to just share the data points with you just so we have that additional information as we go through this conversation. So, I know that a lot of this information was shared back in 2019, but it is a little over a year ago. So, we thought it'd be helpful to walk through some of it again today. So, this just shows you the breakdown in terms of the position descriptions who answered the survey and the total number. You can see up at the top, it's 239 who answered this. There are, the way we do these surveys is we send a link to each of our member firms. So, each year we're about 950 member firms. So, this represents about a 25% response rate. For anybody who's, who is interested in knowing, any survey that's conducted in order for you to be able to rely on the answers to be what's deemed statistically valid, you have to have at least a 22% response rate. So, if we wanted to consider this statistically valid, we could because we were a little bit above that percentage. So, we asked some of the questions that related to these two topics and the conversation or the topic of just workforce in general and concerns folks might have. So, one of the questions we asked was, has your funeral home experienced a shortage of qualified licensed funeral directors available for hire? You can see there that just under 44% said yes. Another third, just under a third, under 30% said no. And there was still a good, you know, 26% who just didn't really have a need to hire recently. So, they felt it was not applicable to them. We asked if they were concerned about the future workforce in New York State. You can see there that over three quarters of the respondents said yes. 13% said no. Another little over 10% had not thought of it yet. So, a pretty strong percentage of the answers came back that there was concern out there. Then we asked if they felt that we, the state association, to continue exploring the topic of the license structure in New York State, just under half said, or really half said yes. Another 40%ish said no. And that same percentage of folks who haven't really thought about it answered again, just under 11%. We then asked a couple of questions about those specific positions that we outlined for you. We gave them some information, not as much as we just gave you, but we did ask about, and a very brief outline about both the assistant position and the arranger position. So, we asked about the Certified Funeral Assistant, if that was worth exploring. Can see there, just over 50% said yes. Another 37-ish percent said no. And that same 10, 11% were unsure. When we asked about the arranger position, 35% said they felt it was worth exploring. 55-ish percent said no and that same 10% was not sure. So, again, just some additional information and data points for you to look at as we go forward and have this conversation. Before I open it up for discussion, just give you some quick information with regard to alcohol and funeral homes. We have not had a task force or any real work done on this. This would be seen as an expansion of the food and beverage law. This topic came up last year in December at the Governmental Affairs Committee meeting and it was brought up in the context of offering a champagne toast. I think the comment was, you know, have we thought about and looking at or exploring the ability to offer alcohol in the funeral home right now under the law? It's prohibited, period. So, if you wanted to have a champagne toast or a Bailey shot or something that was near and dear to the decedent, you can't do that. So, that was how it got brought up. But just so you all know, there has been no further action taken or due diligence conducted. This is our first chance of having feedback from the members or that next step of due diligence through these town halls to get a feel from our members as to what your position is and what your comments and feelings are about expanding the food and beverage law to include alcohol in funeral homes. So, that covers all the information that we wanted to share with you. The balance of our time, I'd like to spend having an open dialogue on these issues. So, I will stop talking now and open the floor up to all our participants. So, again, you have a couple of ways you can do this. You can raise your hand and then I'll see that and I can unmute you. We're not a huge group, so if you want to just unmute yourself to speak, so long as that's kind of orderly, we'll do what, we can continue to do that. And then you also have the option at the, to offer in the chat box to type in a response. So, if you have a comment or a question you'd like to type in, feel free to do that and then I will read it out loud to the group. So, I will now stop and open it up for any comments or questions. Anyone, anybody have feelings either way in general about that idea of exploring the concept further? Pros and cons you see with any of the framework that was presented? Other, other things you think that might be avenues for us to look at if you feel the topic should be explored, but you'd like us to look at something differently, really? John, yes?
I'm just going to speak from the Brooklyn perspective, someone who went through pandemic horribly down here. My workload is last year we did 80 adult funerals. I led a very nice lifestyle. My brother Andrew led a very nice lifestyle. April alone, we did 60 funerals due to COVID. So, the paraprofessional, I think, is an option that we have to explore just for help if, case another emergency comes down. The discussion that you had was a very powerful discussion, but we didn't talk about the option of an emergency need for help.
Thank you, John. And that is something that I think gives us a perspective that we had, did not, we wouldn't have had if we were under normal circumstances and we had had our normal regional town hall, town, our regional meetings. And so, we didn't have any real experience with a certified funeral assistant or any type of certified position. And as we all know, we had a period in time when we were able to deputize people. That is no longer the case, but we have heard from some who used deputized agents and commented on that. So, if you happen to be a funeral director who during the time when we were allowed to have a certified, or I'm sorry, a deputized agent working in your funeral home, if you did do that and you'd like to share your experience, your firsthand experience, we'd love to hear that. That would be helpful for us to hear as well. Anyone on either the certified positions, alcohol and funeral home, something we should continue to explore or not?
Hello, this is JT Sprock.
Hi, JT.
And in reference to alcohol in the funeral home, I just don't see that as being a sound option for our families. It just increases liability and the customer base has changed drastically over the last 20 years. And I just think that would just open up a huge can of worms for us. I don't think it's the direction we should be heading. Just my personal opinion.
Thank you. That's what we're looking for. We want your feedback based on how our members feel on both of these topics.
Hi, this is Patty Murray from Augsburg.
Hi, Patty.
Hi, I just wanted to share, I do support both proposals. I think the paraprofessional certificate would extend the life cycle of a, you know, funeral director's career. We all know that people are just getting larger and, you know, it's really wearing on our bodies. Now, as far as the alcohol, I think that would give the families opportunity to have the ability to share maybe a glass of wine or, you know, a small toast. I don't think it will ever get to a, you know, a party-type atmosphere.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me ask a specific question then. If you don't have any specific opinions or positions or questions on either of the position outlines we presented, again, the goal of this is to get feedback as to whether the association can continue to explore these options. So, is anybody on the phone opposed to continuing the conversation and looking at these issues further?
Mike, this is, this is Scott.
Hi, Scott.
Just judging from the, the feedback and looking, knowing the discussions that have gone on in the, in the board meetings, I think the paraprofessional, especially in light of what happened throughout the pandemic, that was almost an identical scenario as to, is to the doomsday scenario that was put forward by the, by the committee. I think that's something that, that needs to be explored and explored maybe a little bit more aggressively than the, than the alcohol issue. Well, I'm not, not opposed to the alcohol issue. I think the paraprofessional is, is a more pressing situation, you know, as it pertains to the profession as a whole.
Thank you, Scott.
Hey, Mike, it's Krista Busby.
Hello.
Hi, so we actually had a director that needed to step away, but he will send you guys an email. But we did end up deputizing a couple of staff members over the spring and summer. the spring and summer, and they absolutely, we could not have functioned without those people. You know, several of the locations on this call and across, you know, upstate New York are one, two-man shows who quite frankly are aging. So without the paraprofessional, I, I don't see, to echo Patty's words, I really don't see how we continue on, especially with the baby boom that we're facing and the lack of enrollment in the schools. As far as the alcohol goes, that may not pertain to a lot of locations. I know some of us are tiny locations who may not even have, you know, dove into the catering aspect yet. But I think it's important to remember that while it may not affect you, there are locations who have catering rooms and who've set up banquet facilities in their locations. And, you know, we're, we're crazy to think that we're not losing these families because we haven't, you know, gotten on that board to these hotels and these, you know, banquet facilities and catering off-site and things like that. So I think, you know, we, we can't keep tunnel vision because it may not work for us. You know, think that there are other opportunities in the state who would benefit from that. And I think it's worth exploring both of these options.
Thank you. It's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking for. This is really helpful to have this. You know, get people's experiences and to just hear the reasons why you are or are not in favor of it, that definitely helps us. The more information we have, the better decisions we can make. And again, this is for the next step of going back to the board with initial member feedback.
Mike, I'll just share some, some data for, for the group here, maybe to spark some emotion and some dialogue. What I, what we know is that forty-six of the fifty states allow for alcohol consumption in the funeral home. And that is either by specific statute, specific legislation, or it is by lack of legislation where the funeral home would just need to get proper licensing to provide that alcohol. So forty-six of the fifty states allow for it. Forty-nine of the fifty states allow for food and beverage in the funeral home. And this is, this is, in, in some cases, a position that funeral homes take to support and to provide food and beverage, to provide services to their families so they can allow for an environment that's, that's warm and inviting and not having to have a family leave their property and go to a hotel or off-site event center to have the service that they wish. So that's, that's some dialogue that we can begin to have as well.
Thanks Bill. Anyone else? Any other feelings on either of these topics? All right, well, while you're thinking about that, and before we sign off then, if, if there aren't any others, what I'd like to also just offer up is, since we have everyone on the phone together, is as we, we are going to be hosting a, a call in early November, a couple of weeks, or is it a week? For the early November, I don't know the exact date. We're going to do another one of our COVID calls to do an update on things so that we can, we know that things are starting to change a little bit, that we have a new strategy the state is imploring or implementing with regard to dealing with potential hotspots. It's going to be November fifth. And just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you have any, any questions or anything related to COVID or anything else, quite frankly, that you want to ask a question about, since we are all together, feel free to ask anything about that topic as well or any other topics. All right, so let me do this, I will, I will do the auctioneer sound off, the countdown. So any more questions or comments going once? Going twice? All right, looks like we don't have any others. I also want to just let you know that if there are any comment or questions anybody has that you come up with later, or you just felt that it'd be something you'd like to present one-on-one, I will give you my email address, so please send emails on anything you have to me. We will incorporate those into the feedback that we present to the board. I've had a couple of folks already email from some of the other town halls. So that email address is pretty simple, it's just mike@nysFDA.org. So feel free at any time to shoot an email over with any additional feedback or questions you might have. So if before we sign off, I will just turn it back over to our president, Bill Villanova, for any final comments. So Bill.
Mike, thank you. Thank for your, thank you for your presentation today. And I want to thank everybody for attending today's virtual town hall. Again, please communicate with Mike and anyone on the executive board. Any feelings, concerns that you may have regarding these topics. It's through full collaboration that we will have the best results. I also, I also want to acknowledge our sponsors. Something I haven't done, I guess I've been a little remiss there as well. But we do have our sponsors, our trusted sponsors that have helped underwrite and subsidize these virtual town halls. Thank them again, and I look forward to seeing everyone soon. Please stay healthy and keep your family and your community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Have a great rest of your day, everyone.
You too. Thanks, Mike.
Bye.